Well. Not so good. I'll get that in your office to retrieve it. There.
Oh. What's up? I know, but they're here. All right, so they continue. All right, good. Want on the voting club? It's continued. It'll be continued, yeah. You guys sat? Good, all right. Yeah, wherever you are. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's planning board meeting. We have just a few quick orders of business before we get into our public hearings. Just so you know, in relation to public hearings, there are a few that are continued to February 8th, our next meeting. 7716 Valero Road subdivision, 7771 White Elephant Hotel LLC, 16-15 Brotherhood of Thieves, 25-15 Surfside Road LLC, and 5-16 Nantucket Boating Club. So, just if you're here for those, just so you're aware, those will be for our next meeting. With that in mind, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? I'd say unanimously. Minutes from December 14th. Any errors or omissions? If not, I'd take a motion to approve those. Discussion? Sorry? No. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? I'd say unanimously. All right, so first thing before us tonight is going to be 7905, which is Audrey Sturck on 10 Essex Road. Just for the record at this point, Mr. Vors is going to be recusing himself from this application. Okay. So, for the applicant, is anyone here for that? Hi, come on down. How are you tonight?
Well, thanks, how are you?
Great, so if you'd introduce yourself for the record, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. My name is Audrey Sturck. I'm at 10 Essex Road.
Great, is there anything you want to talk to us about that we haven't seen in here, or just maybe kind of open up the conversation a little bit?
Sure, that sounds great.
Great.
I'm just requesting to apply for a subdivision modification for our subdivision on Essex Road to expand to allow tertiary dwellings. And right now, we have some lots that are single dwelling and some that are double dwellings. And so I am looking to expand our subdivision to include a tertiary dwelling.
And by right, this amendment will also lift the restriction on secondary dwellings as well, too, on 10 of the lots?
Yes.
Okay. Just so that we're clear at this point, so everything in there would have the ability to have up to three dwellings?
Yes, I think that's space permitted.
Okay, understandable.
Yep.
Is there anything, is there anything else? Before I start getting into our boards, so go ahead, Linda.
Audrey, you never went forward with the zoning change that you needed to put in?
That's going to be, that's going to come. That'll be next year.
Next year?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know how many lots are in each category. Some lots are allowed secondary lots, I mean secondary dwellings. Some are R5, some are RC. I believe you're still RC, which was the issue.
Um, RC2.
Yep, because they're not allowed tertiary dwellings, which there was a proposal to change the zoning to something better anyway, without losing their commercial ability. But there are several in there that are restricted to one dwelling unit only. As I say, I don't know the numbers, how they're divided in there. There's a little bit of a concern. I don't have any problem with the ones that are primary and secondary dwellings allowing a tertiary dwelling. Because they still have to come here for a special permit. Where it gets a little more dicey is on the lots that were allowed to have only one dwelling unit. And now, if it goes forward as proposed, those lots that are allowed in one dwelling unit are also going to get a second and a third one, which is problematic. So personally, I'm more comfortable with the ones that are required to, allowed only to have one, are allowed a secondary dwelling under the same dimensional requirements as the tertiary's, which is going to be going up to 650 square feet. So that's where I'm having the problem, is we're going to have to restrict the ones that are one to just two, with a limitation on the size of the second one, so they don't just get this benefit out of nowhere. And you guys that have already two, you have two, Tony has two, are allowed to have the third one with the restrictions that are already in the bylaw. So that's where I'm headed. It's just sort of create a two-tier system here.
I understand.
Anyone else?
I would agree with what Linda has said, and that the development of new buildings in many areas that are already crowded would not be what we were looking for, I think.
Comment? I think the goal of this tertiary dwelling thing is that a lot of them have bunk rooms, a lot of them have basement apartments that aren't basement apartments, because they're not legalized, but they may have the access already, the legal access, they may have the egress windows, et cetera, et cetera. What we're trying to do is validate the units that are already there, so they're legal and they can be restricted. So, I don't have a problem doing it here. If we sort of do the two different types that are in there.
Anyone else?
Yep, excuse me. Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, in the Ernestina Way, now known as Essex Road subdivision, there were 42 buildable lots total. Eleven of those lots are still in the RC2 district, and they have commercial potential. Ten residential lots that are now in the R5 district are restricted to one dwelling unit. And 21 lots that are now in the R5 district are allowed to have two dwelling units. I do want to remind the board that when this subdivision was approved back in the earlier mid-'90s, there were quite a few waivers granted for the interior roadway, and I believe that some of that was based on the fact that some of the lots were restricted. So that's something that you should take into consideration while thinking about this proposal. And the other thing, I thought Linda had a really good idea about allowing the lots that are currently restricted to have one more dwelling unit, and the ones that now are allowed to have two dwelling units to have the tertiary unit. I think that's something that you should consider.
But the one dwelling unit lots, the tertiary dwelling unit, will meet the tertiary dwelling unit for sizes? So it's not a free-for-all? And they, clearly, they would still have to meet the dimensional requirements, setback requirements, parking requirements, and if you can't meet them on the 21 lots that are available for this, then you can't have one, so, or it stays illegal.
What were the 11 lots you mentioned?
The ones in RC2.
They were RC2?
The ones that are in RC2.
Leslie, answer.
Okay, yep.
Those are still in RC2, so they would not be eligible for tertiary dwelling right now. So whether those are restricted or not restricted for secondary dwelling, until those go into either a residential district like R5 that allows tertiary dwellings, or a commercial district like Commercial Neighborhood that allows apartments, they would be capped at the two dwellings.
Those are the ones up near Bartlett Road?
So do we know if, if everything were built out to full allowance for the zoning, how many new buildings would be put into Essex Road, including the tertiary?
Give me a moment to calculate, I could probably provide that.
Some are already there, Diane, in basements and over garages, some of them are already there.
Are sort of illegal ones.
Yeah. There are only 10 lots, Diane, that are restricted at the moment to one dwelling unit.
Right.
Which means that they, each one, if they have the ground cover and the parking...
But they have to have the ground cover, right? We're not making any...
No. They have to meet ground cover, setbacks, parking, the distance between the primary and secondary structure of 10 feet minimum, they have to meet all of that. If because of where they place their own house, they can't get that, they can't get one.
Right.
Or they get an accessory apartment in the basement, so there's, I don't know what they call them anymore, but...
Got it, we're ready.
Well, you know, I can't speak for what's there, I mean, there may be, you know, units that have been constructed, there may be units that could be constructed that haven't been yet, there may be illegal units that aren't considered in this, but as far as the, you know, legal potential, this would essentially add one more dwelling unit per lot, so 42 potential new units.
And that's including tertiary only?
That would, that would include the tertiary and the secondary.
You're saying what it would add with what her request is?
Right.
Okay, not with what Linda's modification is, right?
No, this is with Linda's modification. So if each, if each lot that's restricted to one dwelling unit now could have one additional...
Got a tertiary.
And then each lot that's restricted to two units now could also have one more. So it's really one more across the board.
Okay.
So it would be a total, really, of 82 buildings?
No.
No, no.
I get it now, what's going on now.
Forty-two buildings exist?
No.
No.
It would be a potential of 42 legal units, because each lot would be allowed to have one more unit. So it could be a unit in an existing, you know, basement, it could be a garage apartment, it could be in addition to a house, I mean, there's all kinds of options for how that additional unit could be created, or it could be created using existing space.
Or permanent that's already there.
Right. So it could legalize something that already exists as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I got it now.
All right. So ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and, uh, how can this get cleaned up?
Howdy, Anthony Mizotis, I'm at 29 Essex, and I fall into the same place as her. I have two dwellings of mine, I'd like to do a third, so I would, you know, wholeheartedly agree with what she's doing, and I like the restrictions that Linda Williams would put on the lots. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Andrew Vors, and I'm speaking to you as a property owner only, representing my own interests for property I own at 40 Essex Road. I do support what Audrey is doing. She's using an existing building to put an additional unit in, so there's not a new building. And I do support what Linda Williams just said. The board should know that people who bought in there did pay a premium to buy a lot to contain two dwellings, and I don't think that you should release those 10 or 11 lots for a second and a third dwelling. I think if you fairly apply the 550 unit additional dwelling unit to all lots, that's a fair application of the change in zoning. But I don't think those lots, speaking for myself, I did consider that when I purchased the lot, that the property next to me was restricted, so there would be no building in a particular area of that lot. Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Okay. Oh, you got it. Yep. I forgot you, I was not here either.
It's a subdivision.
I thought this was...
Yeah. So it just says chickens.
Yeah, it just says chickens, my apologies.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'd say unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification, to allow those lots, those 21 lots that are in R5, to bail themselves of the tertiary dwelling special permit. The 10 lots that are R5, that are restricted to one dwelling unit, they'd be allowed a secondary dwelling unit under the restrictions of the tertiary.
Second.
And obviously, what do you want to do with the 11 that are RC? We just leave them out of this for now, or? Go ahead and go, well, we have to go ahead and go there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to ask that you make the motion a little bit more vague, just in case I have the zoning and the numbers not completely matched.
Okay.
So I think if, if your motion was just to allow...
Two dwelling lots.
The lots that are currently unrestricted, three dwellings, and to allow the restricted lots, one additional dwelling, that's consistent with the tertiary dwelling requirement of 650 square feet.
And that'll include the 11 RC2 ones?
It will.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we catch everybody. Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
All right, so the motion's made, seconded. Discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'd say unanimously. Great, thank you everyone. Okay.
Those lots are not restricted. They'll be able to go to three.
Trustee, the auction company, the trust owners and...
That's what we did it more vague.
I got it.
Howdy.
We don't have any more information.
Robert Wakowski on behalf of the applicant.
You could I pull that up?
I apologize, Robert Wakowski on behalf of the applicant.
I still can't hear him.
Sorry, Robert Wakowski on behalf of, on behalf of the applicants of Four Lovers Lane.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you have anything you want to bring to us first?
Well, we don't have any more information than we keep asking for, and we don't have a good site plan yet, so...
Right, that's why I'm asking you...
We're not going anywhere.
Just from what I know of this, I believe that the new plan would involve the 30 percent, it'd meet the 30% open spaces. I know there was a question of a loading lane that has not been addressed, can only speak to the business's intent is to be in the afternoon, and that all loading would be done in the morning, so there wouldn't really be an issue as to that.
Yeah, delivery out there.
I don't have any further information. I could ask that this matter be continued to next week, or, excuse me, next session if there's further questions.
Certainly.
I'm here to fill in, and I'd be happy to have any questions I could answer.
Great, thank you.
Rob, can you identify who you represent?
I apologize, Robert Wakowski, I'm here on behalf of Peter Kyberg, who's a trustee as well as the applicants of Four Lovers Lane.
Anything else from the board? Andrew Leslie?
I think it would be helpful for staff to meet with the applicant prior to the next meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on this.
Motion to continue to February 8th.
We're going to need a new action deadline.
And get an extension, Catherine?
Yes.
So the motion's made, seconded, to continue to February 8th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'd say unanimously. Great, thank you everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Arthur Gasparo, engineer for the applicant before you tonight. Along with me is the applicant owner, Seamus Crowley for Nantucket Windows and Doors, along with counsel, Bill Hunter. We're before you tonight for essentially a modification of a existing use. Mr. Crowley runs Nantucket Window and Door business at the property of 46 Nobody Farm Road, which consists of light manufacturing and has a small office building on the site. The staff report that I know you have in your packet does, I think, an excellent job outlining the proposed, the existing uses and the proposal, but for your benefit and the public, I would like to just take a couple minutes and run through sort of exactly what it is that we're proposing to do. Really, the gist of the application is to create in addition and renovate the existing structure that's there, which is going to allow the applicant to move exterior storage indoors. And this will allow him to do some additional manufacturing and then stockpile the materials. The applicant, the application is to, as you can see on the plan, what I've done is to include, I tried to make on one sheet a nice comparison for existing conditions and then proposed conditions, one above the other. And the addition is going along the back of the, the back of the lot. We're on a fairly small lot, it's approximately 12,000 square feet in size within the, along Nobody Farm Road fairly, I think as you can see from the aerial, you know, heavy industrial area. We would be removing the existing steel storage containers, we would be providing, we'd be reconfiguring the parking areas and providing the required six parking spaces for the expanded footprint and structure. We are requesting a reduction in the required open space from 30% to 20%. We have kept sort of a green belt, an existing privet that runs all the way around the property so that we can maintain the 20% standard, which is the standard that's typically applicable to most commercial uses, except for when you do trigger that next level of MCD that then puts you up to the 30%. So we've tried carefully to make sure that we do meet the 20% standard. As additional mitigation, what we've proposed are a couple nice trees along the front corners of the lot, which we think will both help this site and sort of improve the overall streetscape. And as well, what we're proposing to do is to extend the existing bike path of Nobody Farm Road across the frontage of this property. And we would construct that so as to match the existing conditions, essentially same width, asphalt, vertical curbing, put in the warning detector panels where we slope down, we've shown all of those details on the plan. Ultimately, that is proposed within the county road layout, so we understand we would go to the town for them to accept that as a gift, which would be completely constructed at the applicant's expense, and I would assume, you know, subject to review by town engineer when it is constructed, and, you know, we would make sure that we meet the town standards for construction. So we think that that, both of those really provide a good benefit back to the town and essentially in exchange for asking for that reduction in the, in the open, in the open space down to the 20%. We're also asking for a waiver on the inclusionary housing, so that was the other relief that was requested. We're waiting on review from Mr. Pesci. I have sent him all of the materials, but he has been on vacation, so we're, you know, very likely to obviously adhere to any feedback that we get from him, but we have discussed and think that it may be best to hold the public hearing open, just to make sure that we'd like to get your input, the public's input, and then we'll have Mr. Pesci's in if any tweaks or changes need to come as a result of that, and then come back before you in February. And so with that, I'd be happy to hear any questions, comments, or concerns, and as I say, both the applicant and counsel are here as well.
Great, thank you. Board members? Yeah, go ahead.
Seamus, when this came to the HDC, I believe we allowed you to remove that building, the little building?
Uh, yes.
And your little 3D thing there shows the building gone? However, the building is still shown on here, which really impacts you badly trying to maneuver in here? What's happening to that little building?
So the proposal is to keep the building. I had used the HDC plans in order to provide the board with an architectural view of what's being proposed to the back building, so it's obviously clear that's what we had, but as Mr. Crowley's plans have developed and we've sort of worked the site plan to provide, to provide that parking, there is 21 feet of aisle width between the two buildings, which is obviously more than enough for, you know, two vehicles to pass. We do know that it is, it is quite tight. There's no retail sales on the property, so again, it's mostly that when the windows are manufactured and then taken to a job site essentially as needed. But we would like to keep, keep that building, and he understands he'll be back to the HDC. For also, we discussed a slave modification to a, to the door location. You can see that I have the parking in front of, one of the parking spaces is where the door is, so that's a, something he, you know, we've discussed, and it's sort of working through the process of the regulatory boards that we have to address.
But you are definitely keeping that little building now?
That's, that's the hope.
Well, good luck getting around in there. I think from a maneuverability in a parking position, if you took that front porch off that building, you'd have a little bit more space. All right, do you see where I'm talking about?
I do, yes.
If that porch went away, and it was just like a stoop going in there, or your handicap, I don't know how you're going to get in there handicap-wise, but that would give you a little bit more space up there if that building's going to stay there. So while we're waiting for Ed Pesci to attack this...
same width, asphalt, vertical curbing, put in the warning detector panels where we slope down. We've shown all of those details on the plan. Ultimately, that is proposed within the county road layout, so we understand we would go to the town for them to accept that as a gift, which would be completely constructed at the applicant's expense, and I would assume, you know, subject to review by town engineer when it is constructed, and, you know, we would make sure that we meet the town standards for construction. So we think that that, both of those really provide a good benefit back to the town and essentially in exchange for asking for that reduction in the, in the open, in the open space down to the twenty percent. We're also asking for a waiver on the inclusionary housing, so that was the other relief that was requested. We're waiting on review from Mr. Pesci. I have sent him all of the materials, but he has been on vacation, so we're, you know, very likely to obviously adhere to any feedback that we get from him, but we have discussed and think that it may be best to hold the public hearing open just to make sure that we'd like to get your input, the public's input, and then we'll have Mr. Pesci's in if any tweaks or changes need to come as a result of that, and then come back before you in February. And so with that, I'd be happy to hear any questions, comments, or concerns, and as I say, both the applicant and counsel are here as well.
Great, thank you. Board members? Yeah, go ahead.
Seamus, when this came to the HDC, I believe we allowed you to remove that building, the little building?
Uh, yes.
And your little three-D thing there shows the building gone? However, the building is still shown on here, which really impacts you badly trying to maneuver in here? What's happening to that little building?
So the proposal is to keep the building. I had used the HDC plans in order to provide the board with an architectural view of what's being proposed to the back building, so it's obviously clear that's what we had, but as Mr. Crowley's plans have developed and we've sort of worked the site plan to provide, to provide that parking, there is twenty-one feet of aisle width between the two buildings, which is obviously more than enough for, you know, two vehicles to pass. We do know that it is, it is quite tight. There's no retail sales on the property, so again, it's mostly that when the windows are manufactured and then taken to a job site essentially as needed. But we would like to keep, keep that building, and he understands he'll be back to the HDC. For also, we discussed a slight modification to a, to the door location. You can see that I have the parking in front of, one of the parking spaces is where the door is, so that's a, something he, you know, we've discussed, and it's sort of working through the process of the regulatory boards that we have to address.
But you are definitely keeping that little building now?
That's, that's the hope.
Well, good luck getting around in there. I think from a maneuverability in a parking position, if you took that front porch off that building, you'd have a little bit more space. Art, do you see where I'm talking about?
I do, yes.
If that porch went away, and it was just like a stoop going in there, or your handicap, I don't know how you're gonna get in there handicap-wise, but that would give you a little bit more space up there if that building's gonna stay there. So while we're waiting for Ed Pesci to attack this, I think you need to really work through this circulation, because what's happening at the moment with that porch being there and the ramp being so far forward of it, you're gonna be forcing everybody, especially the loading truck, to back out into the street across the bike path. Not that people haven't been doing it forever out there on both sides of you, but I just think if there's a way to give yourself a little bit more room in there by getting rid of that, and perhaps you go talk to the building inspector and ask him if there's no public access to that little building, would that alleviate the issue of having to ramp it? Which would again bring this whole front of the building back like eighteen feet, which would give you a little bit more room to people to back in and then back, go out forward. So that's just, that was my only concern. Obviously, I'm familiar with the project from the HDC side of it, so I don't have an issue with whatever you want to do out there. I just think that the site plan needs to be sort of massaged a little bit.
We could certainly investigate that.
Anyone else on the board? Anything from staff?
Art, on your plan, it doesn't show on the other side of the road, is that, what's the intersecting road, is that...
Hanaby Lane.
Hanaby, so...
What you could see on the aerial.
Yeah. Is there a sidewalk, isn't there a sidewalk on Hanaby that...
There is.
Okay. So I, my concern is that I, in your design, I think maybe the curb, you might want to plan for a crosswalk here to cross over...
Okay.
To that side, so before we go to your, I guess, the northern part of your entrance, maybe to have that curb either flush or...
Right, so that it almost provides, you would have a spot perhaps that it goes across Nobody Air, and we showed almost the same detector panels and...
Right.
And then maybe part of going to the county commissioners would include us, you know, possibly striping that, or including that as part of what we do, or just even a suggestion to them?
Yeah, or at least so we could get that crosswalk there...
Okay.
And not have to take out curbing or anything after you've done it.
Sure, we can do that.
And then, because there's further challenges to get down to the end of the corner, but this is, I mean, overall, this plan is great, and I think extending that little bit will allow the connection through to the other sort of existing network on that other side of the street, so...
Yeah, that's great. Anything else?
No.
No? Okay. Not here anything else? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this? All right, not seeing anything at this point, so I know...
Are we activating?
No, because...
Oh, we're just continuing.
We need to wait for Ed Pesci to get back.
I'll make a motion to put this over to, he's back now, he was on vacation. I'll make a motion to put this over to February eighth.
Okay. Motion's made in second, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, everyone. Next thing is sixty-two fifteen, which is James P. Manchester in Holland B. Manchester, One Manchester Circle. Mr. Reed, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. May recall that at the last meeting, this was continued, there was concern about the layout of the parking as it was shown on the plan and the driveway as it came in. You have a revised plan now that been prepared by Earl and Sullivan, which I believe meets those concerns based upon the, what I've seen on the staff report, and we would therefore ask you to proceed to go forward without any questions that you may have, and hopefully to approve the plan. At the last meeting, we did accomplish the modification of the previous plan approval, which had a prohibition against further subdivision of the lots shown on the plan, and instead of having that be continued as a prohibition, the board voted, as we suggested, to have it be something that could be waived in any, in any instance, as it has been previously by the board on another subdivision off this road. And so we would ask that you waive that prohibition and allow this, this plan, which involves a, the creation of a secondary lot.
Okay. Board members? Anything? No? 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 Andrew, anything you have for us from staff?
No, I, I believe all of the issues were addressed. I know that Holly spent time with Mr. Manchester, and the revisions to the plan, I think, address all the issues.
Great. Special permit? Yep. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All right, I'm gonna stop right here for a second. Mr. Borch, I think all of you are here for December, am I correct? Yeah, all right. So Carl and Di, I'm gonna activate you for this one, okay? Beautiful, go ahead.
Public hearing.
And do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Motion to approve.
Motion's now made in second for discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated, thank you, Mr. Reed. Next is zero-one dash one-six, Tess Anderson, fifty-six C., Hoop Farm Road. For the applicant, Mr. Sullivan, good evening. Holly?
Hi, Brian Sullivan, husband of the applicant. So I'm a little unclear, because I believe I may not need the public hearing, because we have reduced the square footage as required under the five-fifty.
So I think the...
No? No?
Well, what we need to do is, I hate to say this, you're gonna have to hang around until we get to our tertiary dwelling phase of things that would be appropriate, because I'm not sure, but the best thing for the board... Yeah, I'm just thinking the best thing for the board to do is just take this application, allow it to be withdrawn without prejudice, and yet just very cleanly puts that away, and then we can just deal with the tertiary, I know. We, we are going to approve it just in a different phase, not, yeah, tertiary dwellings aren't a public hearing thing, so, yeah, go ahead, I, I know.
Mr. Chairman, it's not listed under the tertiary dwelling portion of the app, of the agenda?
It is.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it says, see special permit.
Yeah, it, it...
What it says is, it says, see special permit, so forth and so on, on the tertiary dwelling, 'cause all the information is over there, but it did really...
All right, so let's try this, let's try this. Just, just so that we're good about things. If I don't, if everyone's all fine, we're just gonna take this, withdraw the application without prejudice, close that, we'll very quickly just move into dealing with this one tertiary dwelling. I don't see anyone stepping up to the plate here to say they're against that.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Point of information here, the agenda is what we're talking about.
That's correct.
So the only place this appears is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Not, the, the staff report is not the agenda.
No, I know.
So the only place that this appears is under this, so...
This would be appropriate to...
So you, the point is, is that the modifications no longer require it to be a public hearing.
Right.
You're doing a simple review of the tertiary dwelling like you do a second dwelling.
Okay.
So you do need to address it here on the agenda.
Okay.
But it is not a public hearing, it is not a special permit.
Correct.
Only the three...
Regular...
Regular...
Right, I understand that, but...
...to do, approve the tertiary dwelling?
Yes.
Correct, just like a system dwelling.
But since it was brought to us as a special permit, should we dispose of that particular piece? That's all, that's my only concern.
You can allow, if you allow just the withdrawal of the special permit application...
Over five-fifty.
That was my plan here, is just to allow the withdrawal of it without prejudice.
That's my motion.
And just deal with the tertiary dwelling right after it.
All right, that's my motion, is to allow the withdrawal without prejudice of the special permit related to square footage for a tertiary dwelling over five-fifty.
And Andrew, I'm just gonna ask you a question from Robert's rules perspective. Is it necessary to activate the two alternates?
Not for a tertiary dwelling.
No, for special...
No, it's a special permit.
Special permit, it is, okay. So Di, John, just, I'm just gonna activate you very quickly for, just to dispose of the special permit, okay?
Okay, my motion was to allow the special permit part of this in excess of five-fifty square feet for the tertiary dwelling to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Now I'm gonna make a motion to approve the tertiary dwelling.
There we go, do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those...
You guys can't sit down.
Yeah, it's just a three-person on this one, that's okay.
We need a roadmap.
That's okay, it's just a little bit of an unusual circumstance.
Thank you.
All in favor, it was unanimous, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, sorry. So that brings us to... Sorry, so that's gonna bring us to two-dash sixteen, which is Mark Lombardi and Maureen Lombardi, trustees of Lombardi Realty Trust, One Porch Gaff. Mr. Reed, hello again.
Thank you. Attorney Arthur Reed representing Mark and Maureen Lombardi, who are here tonight along with the surveyor, Teddy King, who prepared the plan. This is a modification, actually, of a definitive subdivision that had been voted some time ago, the effect of which is to create an additional building lot on this long, narrow parcel of land. The lots are of, they, they meet the minimum area. There are various other issues that we'll have to deal with on this with other boards, but as far as the planning board is concerned, we're modifying the existing plan, we're extending the roadway that was shown on the earlier plan, extending and modifying its locations somewhat. We're creating two additional lots that are not buildable and are not intended to be buildable and will be marked as such. We can put language on the definitive plan when it's submitted for endorsement that would indicate that those lots are in fact not buildable. They're just excess land that when you work out, the regularity as best you can on this, on these lots, including them presents difficulties. One of them is on the other side of a roadway that is being extended and is simply excess land. There are a number of waivers that we've requested, we can go through those or not. I think in the nature of this subdivision, which is only creating one additional lot with what effectively is going to be a roadway that is nothing more than the existing driveway that runs through the property, that most of those waivers should not present any difficulty, but we can answer any questions that the board has with regard to them.
Board members? Yeah?
Just a couple of things, Arthur. I just want to make sure that what gets in the decision also includes, I believe it's gonna have to have frontage averaging.
We're working on that at the present time, we, and there are some points on that as to which we're probably going to wind up having to be at the Board of Appeals because of the shape of the lots.
I was gonna ask, that's my next thing, this stupid irregularity factor, which I wish we'd just bag it all together, the bane of my existence when I was at the ZBA. At some point, I assume, when it gets back towards the pond, the lot gets less than fifty feet.
Yeah, that's one of the things we've got to deal with.
Not my problem here. I just want to make sure that whatever we do here includes the frontage averaging issue.
Right, that, obviously, the, the frontage averaging is something that certainly should be referred to in the decision, that you're allowing frontage averaging, but that, which of course, we, you, you, frontage averaging is something that you can do as a matter of right, it's a question of complying with the mathematical problem of the width of the lot, which is interesting, has all kinds of ramifications when you think it through.
Yeah.
But in any event, that's really an issue as to which any relief would need to be done by variance, and therefore we're at the ZBA rather than the planning board, unfortunately.
So we conceivably could grant approval today, and they can just, obviously, you're dealing with the ZBA at some point here, probably in February, and we do the definitive plan in the office?
Mr. Chairman, through you...
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Can I ask Mr. Reed a question? So, Mr. Reed, you're, the frontage, I mean, when you use frontage averaging and the fact that the lot can't go at any point below fifty feet, are you, do you intend to bring that to the ZBA?
Yes, I think we'll have to.
Okay.
Frontage regularity factor.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think it's two things, actually, isn't it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, go right ahead.
Just to clarify, because it, the, the lot as shown does not meet the regularity factor, is that right?
Right.
And so, and in addition, because you're using frontage averaging, and you're reducing the lot in width below fifty feet in, at least now in two locations, you probably can deal with the, I guess, the southernmost point of it, it looks like, you know, there could be another separate lot created down there?
Well, tho, those are the issues, those are the zoning issues that are not within the purview of the planning board that we'll have to deal with.
That you're gonna ask relief for?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that there's, there's two.
There's a further point, on the plan, it makes reference to the wetland status of the lots, which of course is no longer part of the bylaw, and I'm suggesting that we remove that language, because it's not an issue for the planning board in any event, and at the same time, put in the language, as I say, reciting that lots six and eight are not buildable lots, which they certainly aren't, and not intended to be.
Go ahead. Sorry, again, through you, so this was an issue that was raised, lot seven, are we certain that that has the minimum upland requirement?
We will have to work on that, and if, and if it is short of it, that would be another issue that we would have to deal with the Board of Appeals on.
So that could be a third...
That could be a third, we're, we're about to undertake a determination of exactly what the upland and wetland areas are on the lot.
Okay.
Which we'll need to do, we would need to do that in order to get a building permit later in any event, so that is something that, if we're, if we're, if we come out just a file of that, and I don't think it'll be that much in either direction, we would be raising that as a zoning issue, because it does come up under zoning with the, with the ZBA.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Yeah, it's okay, I can still ask. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on this, Mr. Collier, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Colonel Collier, please excuse my, my cough.
No problem.
Thank you to Mr. Voice, Mr. Voice, sorry, Andrew, Mr. Voice, Vorse, it's bad right now.
Try it again.
You should've seen me last week. Thank you for bringing up those points, I had mentioned them, so that definitely clears it up. Traditionally, has it been standard practice when those issues are raised, that on the plan, it does state that this plan is not in conformance with zoning? That's a question, additional questions that I have at this point is more just, I think, as it relates to the plan itself and the requirements for submittal, there's no signature on the plan, and there's no stamp on the plan, either land surveyor stamp or land engineer, professional engineered stamp. I can't remember if the stamp is required or the signature is required, or neither. Question for you guys. Additionally, if you look at the plans, the original subdivision plan...
Can you hold on for one sec?
Sure.
They're kinda, I think they're conferring on that issue as we speak, so I just don't want them to miss what you're bringing up. want them to miss what you're bringing up, that's all.
Okay.
No, it's okay.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I wasn't sure if you were-
I was just checking on the point that Cormac raised regarding the plan being not signed and stamped, and Teddy says that the original plan that was submitted is, it's the electronic version that doesn't contain those.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All I saw was the, what was online.
Yeah, and like I said, I just didn't want them to miss anything when they were conferring, so please, continue.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So that clears that up.
Thank you.
If you look at the original subdivision plan that Daler did, Daler Consulting did, and then the modification that you approved in 2003, it uses as the actual property line for the lot five, which is now in the hands of the land bank, property line by the pond. And there's some fairly definitive in both of those plans, lines, as it's demarcated. In your plan, not your plan, in the plan before you right now, it's simply a wavy line. And I'm wondering how approving this is actually allowed when it doesn't necessarily portray existing property lot lines?
Well, I think, and Mr. King can respond to this as well, but a water line is always subject to change, even when you're dealing with land court property, which this isn't. You wind up with the line along a water course, whether it be the ocean or a pond or a stream or whatever, is not dimensioned. I mean, I've seen plans where it is dimensioned, but the fact is that it changes, and if the property is bounded by a water course of any type, it, the boundary is wherever the line would be from time to time as a result of change through, you know, natural processes.
And if that's the case, then I don't, I unfortunately don't see how you can approve this plan before you because right now you have lot nine, lot seven representing 80,700 square feet. If land bank actually owns more than that along the pond, without a delineation before you, it's not even conforming to the 80,000 square foot minimum.
If I could respond to that, that's a survey question, and the fact that the line may be something that varies from time to time doesn't mean that it can't be surveyed and determined at a particular point in time. And that's the calculation that the surveyor has done to show the present area. If there's an issue about this at the time, a building permit is being pulled, then a surveyor will have to certify it at that time, and it's subject to change over a period of time. I'm not familiar with the line that Mr. Collier is speaking about, showing the land bank property, but the fact is that we own wherever the, you know, the boundary line is. And the planning board isn't in the business, I would respectfully suggest, of adjudicating and determining boundary lines. Obviously, if we have a zoning issue, we have a zoning issue and we'll have to deal with it. If we have an issue with regard to access to the property, that's obviously a planning board issue and something for you to consider, but I don't believe that this plan is dependent upon the planning board making a determination at this time as to that line.
Yep, go ahead, Andrew. Did you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I do see the point here. If you look at page 14 of 14 in your, in the report that was, that Holly prepared, there's a very specific square footage and I believe, is this what you're referring to, Mr. Collier, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So lot five was deeded to the land bank based on this description and this square footage, right?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
And so I think that it looks like there may be a discrepancy, I can't tell for sure, but between what's shown here as the edge of the pond and not, it looks a little different.
Excuse me, Teddy King. The pond was located by Charles Hart back at the beginning when he defined the law to made it one 12-acre law. I started with that, I worked for Charles and had the same shots on the pond, and so I'm using the exact same wetland that I believe Daler, Chip, and myself are all using from the same computer file. So I don't believe it's different, or I'm not intending to make it different.
Okay. I think the point is, because this is an approval-required subdivision, I don't, you know, we shouldn't really, as a planning board, make modifications that create zoning issues. This is, the base for this is an approval-required subdivision.
Okay.
It's not an A&R that we're just creating on an existing, I mean-
Right, okay.
Yes, the road is existing, and I think, you know, I'm not saying I have a problem with the plan itself. I think the plan, you know, is fine, but I think on a technical matter, it's, these are issues that we probably need to be absolutely sure of, so.
I don't think it would hurt to just go to Conservation Commission first, and you could get the delineation of the pond, the delineation of the actual wetland, because there's two different things, wetlands and pond. The pond is, from what Arthur's saying, with the original transaction, is what the land bank owns. The wetlands themselves are going to be on the applicant's property and will help determine if they meet the 90%.
Is anybody, are you applying to the CONCOM?
I've just suggested to the clients that the next step should be for wetland delineation to be made by a competent wetland scientist, and then based upon how that comes out, we might well do an RDA at the CONCOM.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
To summarize my point, I guess, would be a request that it be continued until the Conservation Commission figures it out. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, if I could, and I believe this is not in your purview, but I just wanted to get confirmation from staff, if I could, through you.
Who?
Is that each individual homeowner in the original subdivision, which is Mr. Lombardi, the land bank, and on this plan, it's Mr. Addison, I believe, have the ability to enforce the restriction for no further subdivision. That's not in the purview of the planning board. The planning board essentially has the ability to say yes or no to further subdivision, and you don't necessarily take into consideration if the individuals in the subdivision are just going to say no.
I believe that is the case, yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Okay. So I think the recommendation that we've heard from staff is the best thing to do would be to wait for the determination from CONCOM and hold this aside for now. You can correct me if I'm wrong in any juncture, Andrew. Since this, you were saying this is closer to an AR than an A&R.
Well, the, Mr. Chairman, the underlying plan is an AR plan.
Right.
So the redivision, you know, first you're allowing it to be redivided, and then it may be an A&R plan that follows, but I think that there is, you know, it's not like a situation, you know, where it's a lot of record or something where it's really not the business, as Arthur said, it's not the business of the planning board to enforce wetland rules and other things, but some of these are closely tied to zoning, and I think that, I think you want really to know what you're doing on those particular matters. So I think that additional information, it may lead to some slight plan modifications, I don't know at this point, but I think that there's a few things that I think need some additional work.
Okay. Linda, go ahead.
Is this information that can be obtained by January 28?
I don't know. If you want to post, if you want to post, I won't be able to be at that meeting, but Mary Ann-
You're not here either?
I'm sure could.
No, he's not.
He's not here either.
Let's just stick with February 8.
I think that would, yeah. Okay. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Not seeing anything, pleasure of the board at this point.
Motion to continue to February 8.
Okay. And do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made in second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next thing is 3-16, Greg W. Gwacki, 21, Greg Lynn Ave.
Teddy King, representing applicant Greg Gwacki.
Okay.
Really don't have anything to say on the thing. I believe it's on the report.
All right. Board members? Nothing at this juncture? Okay. Anything from staff? Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, in the staff report, we suggested a revised site plan, changing the parking configuration, and the applicant has provided that, so we recommend approval.
Okay. All right. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? This is a public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And before you do that too far, let's see. I'm not sure I left off that.
John and Carl.
No, it's John and Carl.
John and Carl, that's correct. Yeah. Yes, it is. Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Motion to approve. With that, he's already provided the plan.
revised plan. And do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Great.
Correct the next one. The Structures Unlimited is not the applicant, they're the agent. They shouldn't be listed as the applicant.
Okay.
It's simply the Donnlands.
Got it. So at that change, 4-16, Christina Joseph P. Donnlan, 37, West Maya Comet Ave. Hadi.
Hi there.
How are you?
I'm Nancy Drazel, here to represent Structures Unlimited and the Donnlands. And basically, they would like to construct a shed on their property, and the problem being and why we're here is it's in the Morelands Management District, and we are asking for a relief from the limit of clearing so that part of the shed could extend beyond that limit. I have a couple of pictures here if that helps anybody to decide what we're doing.
Sure, you can drop that with staff if you don't mind, and we'll see what the thought process is here. Okay. Board members, do you have any questions? Go ahead.
Nancy, I've been out there ad nauseam, but this is on the part of the lot where there's already a natural clearing. I think it's already been disturbed land back off the parking area.
Exactly, to the left.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
It's not really affecting the clearing very much. I showed that in the picture.
Yep.
And if there was any question about the prior shed, it was in a totally different area.
Porch on it, had every, goofy windows, the whole nine yards.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Anything from staff? Leslie, Andrew? No. It's a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And, second.
Oh, do you have to activate people?
Yes, I do. Yep, so, now it's, that's correct.
Diane and John. It was just John and Carl. Now it's Carl and Diane.
Yeah, it's Carl and, yes, thank you.
We do this at the HTC every week, 500 times. We just keep it going around the table.
Yes, that's what we're going to try to do. All right. So the motion is to close the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second and for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously.
The other one was continued.
That is correct, which brings us to our last one, which is 6-16, Anderson Grenon and Kenneth Coffin, 39, 41, 43, Tomahawk Road.
The thing with the cement.
I'm sorry?
You coming?
For the applicant?
For the applicant, Art Gasparrow, Blackwell Associates, I'm the engineer and surveyor on the project, and I'm here along with the owner applicant, Mr. Grenon, for Nooka Tents. This is a, as well as counsel, Mr. Hunter, modification of the previously issued special permit as they went through the HTC process to essentially modify the layout of the structure and the parking to mirror. It's basically a, almost a 180 flip, if you were to draw a line through what had previously been approved. Essentially, the previous approval on the parking was on the north side of the structure, and we flipped the building over and along with the parking, and that's now on the south side of the structure. I've made a couple other slight adjustments, if you will, to the retaining wall going around the structure and asphalt to go possibly sort of around the backside of the structure. Again, this subdivision was all originally designed such that the drainage systems in the, in the road were to accommodate the full buildout of the lots. And so with that, it's really, that's the major changes of the site plans before you. We'd be happy to try to address. It'll be served by town sewer, town water, providing parking. I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary. It's for the tent business, and this is right up against the airport fence, sort of in the backmost corner of the Tomahawk Drive subdivision. I'd be happy to address questions, comments, or concerns that you might have.
Yeah. Board members?
In the staff recommendation, it's the public sees, you don't need a special permit for the wellhead grandfather.
Well, the first half are new on that, I mean.
So I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're just doing a simple site plan change? That's it?
Yes, to modify the site plan.
That's it.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else on the board?
It's Diane and John.
Well, if it's just modifying-
I don't know, Diane and John.
Just hold on. This is modifying a special permit, correct?
Yes, so you do need to activate alternates.
Right, no, no, I'm just, no, that's okay. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it up for consideration, you said you were going to put proposed asphalt in the rear of the building when it goes up against the bank?
Just to the retaining wall.
Okay.
Yep. And the bank, no, 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 the bank will stay, and the retaining wall will be under four feet high, so it's not subject to building permits.
Right, we talked about all that. I was just concerned that you would leave up to the-
No, no, ma'am.
-bank.
Anyone else? Andrew, Leslie, anything you have? It's a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And just so you know, Diane and John are activated for this one. Do I hear a second? Motion is now made in second and for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next thing before us are A&Rs. You have five of them before you at this point. Is there anything you want to isolate out?
No. Motion to endorse 7-911, 7 Eagle Lane, 7-912, 27 Sankety, 7-913, William Edward Papendick, 25 Sankety Road, 7-914, B&amp;D Real Estate Trust, Quinnet, on 7-915, 23 Federal Street. 25 Sangaty Road, 7914, BND Real Estate Trust, Quinnett, on 7915, 23 Federal Street.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have unanimously. Under previous plans, 20-15, Paul M. Roberts, ZBS, this is pretty straightforward.
Motion to endorse.
Okay, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have unanimously. Next thing is 48-15, South Valley Industrial Park, MCD.
Motion to, Leslie. Why don't we go to Leslie?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Quick clarification on this.
Yes, ma'am.
The lots are in the subdivision underlying the MCD, it's not releasing lots from the MCD, so just to clarify.
Okay.
Yep.
We had a little trouble locating a name on that subdivision, so.
All right.
That's my motion, is to go ahead and release.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have unanimously. 7438, 5 South Cambridge Street.
Did we get the money?
Hold on for a sec, she's confirming right now.
His vote got canceled, so he wasn't able to make it over, but he is going to get a check tomorrow.
Apparently, there was a travel issue in getting the check over here, but we recommend that you vote to endorse the Form J, and we'll hold it until the money's received.
I'm making a motion to hold the Form J until the money has been paid into the account.
And release said lot.
And release said lot.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have unanimously. 7904, Newtown Road subdivision, this is to endorse plans.
I'll make a motion to approve this subdivision to be held until a review by Mr. Pesci.
Second.
In the office.
Second.
That motion's now made in seconded, discussion on the issue, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have unanimously. All right, that brings us to ZBA. You have four applications that are going before them at this point, is there anything you want to comment on in here?
Were, did they make the agenda, posted agenda, or not?
Yes, I posted it today, 48 hours, chairman wasn't there.
Yep.
Oh. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe there's anything of planning concern, other than the Surfside 40B, and at this point, it's the very first public hearing, so I think it would be premature to comment, they will be providing a recommend, or a presentation to the ZBA, and after speaking with the chairman of the ZBA, I believe that they will be seeking comments from the planning board.
Fantastic.
At a later date.
And the other 12 entities are supposed to.
Anyways, all right, so as far as I'm concerned with the board, unless anyone says differently, these won't be a planning concern at this juncture? At this juncture?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion specifically, that APGAR, 0116, 0216, Coonahan, 0316, Gould, oh, and that's it.
That's 0316, yeah.
Those are, those three are not a planning concern.
Okay. Settle for that, and we'll just, discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I will make a motion that the planning board is going to withhold comment on Surfside Commons 40B, 106 Surfside Road, pending a formal request for review from the ZBA.
I might want to change that.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the chairman of the ZBA had asked to have staff present at the meeting.
Yeah.
We've already had a coordinated review, I think, as you know, we assisted the Board of Selectmen in drafting the letter to the funding agent, and there's some basic concerns that I think we as staff want to present to the ZBA.
On Thursday?
You don't necessarily, you know, we could have a discussion about that now if you'd like to, but I don't want to do that and then have you say, well, the board didn't authorize it, or something like that.
Right.
I want you to authorize, you know, the sta, or at least to recognize that the staff does have some comments on this.
Yeah. It's just that we're withholding board, formal board comments at this time, staff is allowing that.
I understand, but I want you all to remember that, you know, time is not your friend here.
That's correct.
That you don't have, there's a very tight schedule where comments will be received, and it may not be the kind of application where there's voluntary grants to extend the public hearing on and on, so I don't want you to think this is a normal application.
No, but I just, I want to make clear, though, as the motion, we understand that, but I'm making a motion that the planning board itself withholds comment on this application until we have a formal review and recommendation to the ZBA, if that means we have to have a special meeting just dedicated to this, which probably is going to be the case, but acknowledging that staff will be attending the ZBA meeting to present the concerns already expressed in the letter to the state. Does that work?
Except for, Mr. Chairman, through you, except for the first part of it, it's a little too tight here, I think, you know, in general, if, I mean, is there any level of support for the current plan?
No, not from me.
From this board? Because I would, I would guess that there's some serious negative aspects to this particular proposal, in terms of its location, in terms of its, the scope of it, if any of you have been to the website, I know Eleanor has provided you with the links to that.
Thank you.
The, there are some major issues to this particular, A, location, and B, very, to the specific design proposal being raised here, and that was, I know you all had a chance to review the letter that was sent to the funding agency, so, you know, I don't want to go, I think we should be able to represent, the planning board has some serious reservations about this plan, or is not inclined to support it at all.
But that's, that's all in the letter.
But I don't think it's helpful to be, the planning board doesn't want to say anything at this point.
That wasn't my intention, my intention is to, you know, we endorsed the letter, we've already endorsed the letter, my intention was that we're not making anything in writing in addition to that letter at this time, because we don't, we haven't met to formally review it and make a formal recommendation, though the concerns are still there, as expressed previously in the letter.
But I think, why don't we just hold that for about a minute or three, let's just hold that thought for about a minute or three. I think the other thing that staff is respectfully requesting at this point, and who knows if we're going to get invited to the table here, but they do feel as though they've got comments they want to bring forward at this point, I think they would appreciate our support underneath that, and we can do that formally.
I just did that, my motion, that we support the letter and the concerns already expressed, and that staff is going to continue to express those planning board concerns.
I think they're going to develop.
Hold on, hold on, I think you're, I'm a little concerned about where you're tracking this to.
But I have not sat down as a planning board to review the packet, and I don't want it online, I want a freestanding packet.
All right, but can...
That's what I'm after.
All right, but can we respectfully, I think staff is asking for us to listen to them for a few minutes, am I, and Andrew?
No, he said what he said, and I support it.
Can you let me finish?
A hundred times.
Can you let me finish? Because I know what you want, but that isn't necessarily what I think is being asked here at this point, and I think I'd like to be able to defer to staff, just to get a sense of some things that they have asked, that they'd like to discuss with us, and probably get that support. Andrew, I mean, am I correct here?
Yes, I'm, the motion, I understand now that we've talked it through, but Linda's motion was a little too tight here.
Yes.
And just to be clear, the planning board has not signed on to any prior letter.
Correct.
The Board of Selectmen signed on to a letter.
Right.
You haven't taken a position, whether you agree with those points or not, to my knowledge.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not officially.
Yeah, so, so that's what I'm trying to get at, is that I want to know, you know, I think it's, I think you should have some, at least, you know, higher level discussion about this, if you're going to, you know, what are your, what are your basic thoughts? You have to have some at this point.
Okay. Again, I think in order to give them a formal response on review, we have to have a special meeting probably, with a individual packet sitting in front of us, and get the packets ahead of time, I'm not doing this online, and if you want a laundry list, density, location, sewer and water, impact on an already developed large lot neighborhood, a failed intersection, access.
Slow down, slow down.
Yeah, please slow down. Could this mic?
Slow down.
It'll be on tape.
Let him have a few moments, slow down.
Parking, I guess infrastructure impact, is the easiest way to put that, I can't get into the architectural aspect of it, but it leads me to say that it's too dense for that area. The 40B is in the same area of the island where there are seven other 40Bs, which means that that section of the island is taking the impact for the entire rest of the island, which, under DHCD guidelines, is not something they support, it's supposed to be spread out through the community, so there are a lot of planning issues with it, but I think a lot of that tracks back to the infrastructure and the density, frankly, I'm not opposed to a low-impact affordable housing, a pocket 40B, so to speak, on that property, eight units, something along those lines, because it's certainly large enough to accommodate that, you know, small cottages, and I think that would be perfectly appropriate and fit in with the residential character of the neighborhood, but I think those are the concerns that we're going to be hearing. Does that give you enough?
Can I mention one?
Please.
Did you mention Linda? The traffic?
Yes, I said infrastructure, the failed intersection, it was an F when the Abrams Quarry went in.
Correct.
Thank God they put a, I hated the stop sign initially, but I love that stop sign now, because I can get out of the Badlands where I couldn't before, so I think we've got, it's a rural road, single-track road, it's, it has the ability to create planning havoc over there, so, is that pretty much what you said in the letter anyway, right? So, that would be my motion, if you want me to rephrase it, that they represent that the planning board has significant concerns about these issues, but has not had a chance to formally review and give them a written recommendation.
That's fine. Okay.
Does that work for a motion?
I think so, is it, is it worth just throwing in there that we strongly request the ability under which to do it, or we request?
They're required to ask us, under the 40B guidelines, required.
All right.
Could you repeat what you just told, chairman?
He asked if...
No, I was just, I was just asking if we could strongly request.
However, they're required. The letters are supposed to go out to all of the things that are listed in the 40B, asking for a formal response, not a coordinator review.
No.
A formal response back to the ZBA, having done four of them myself, back to the ZBA, which includes the HTC, which includes the planning board, but what also has to happen is that formal request has to come from the ZBA to those entities requesting it, and when that does, time does happen, I did speak to the chairman of the ZBA today, when that does happen, I would like my own full packet.
I have ordered full packets.
For us and for the HTC. So, that was my motion.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, too, I think the ZBA has said, all along, the members have said they welcome and want the planning board's input.
Yeah, they need it.
And...
Everybody.
And the others as well, so.
I'm just waiting for the formal, the letter asking for it, which is part of the required process.
Right, so.
Andrew, do you need anything from us for supporting staff, present, coming back with information for us to make a formal?
That's what we just talked about.
You know what I mean? That's what we're doing, right?
Yes, I think that, as long as that's clear.
It sounded like you were looking for that, I just want to make sure that we're all set.
What I didn't want, and what, you know, I think Linda has corrected it now, is that for the staff to be there, we've, we've made representations already, and I just want to make sure that it's consistent with the board, and now I'm comfortable that it is.
Yeah, okay. So, I'll second Linda's motion, then, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion is made in seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have unanimously.
And that for anybody who'd like to attend it, that meeting is 1:00 Thursday this week, tomorrow. Last of the applications that will be heard at the Thursday hearing.
In here.
And that meeting starts at 1:00, does it?
Starts at 1:00, there's two old business items, one of which is a 40B, which is being withdrawn, I've asked the applicant to present the reasons for withdrawing that, and then there are three new business items, and then...
Can you, do me a favor? Just, I, yeah.
What's the other 40B?
It's kind of important, sorry, Eleanor.
It's going to be the second question, I support.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry. Don't tell me that.
Screen there.
Eleanor Antoni, zoning administrator. To repeat what I just said, so everybody can hear, and for the record, the zoning Board of Appeals meeting will take place this Thursday, January 14th, starting at 1:00 PM. There are two old business items, one of which is a 40B, which is being withdrawn, I've asked that applicant to, to explain why she and the organization which she represents are withdrawing, then there are three new business items, and the fourth will be the Surfside Commons 40B.
Great, thank you. Public comment, under other business. War and Articles are coming up, that's scheduled for the 28th at 6:00 PM, I believe. Okay, and staff has been good enough to provide a little bit more information, again, the second dwelling conditions.
Motion to hold that discussion until Joe is here.
Yes, absolutely, I don't, I'm not even sure it's necessary.
I'm not even sure we have to do it.
I don't think we have to make a motion.
But it's not right.
It's pretty straightforward.